Okay, we're out of an executive. Please know that there was no decision made. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a Valley County Surveyor contract offering from qualifications. Senator Herring.
So you received a copy of the surveying services agreement that has been developed for Bowers Land Surveys. It's the same contract we've been doing for a number of years with his updated fees attached.
Can you give us a brief one on what's the difference?
There is no difference. It's the same one we've been doing for a number of years.
I mean, the fees start.
Oh. Principal supervisor went from 105 to 120. Professional land surveyor went from 90 to 105. Chief went from 75 to 90. Instrument person went from 60 to 75. Chain rod person went from 45 to 60. Cat technician went from 75 to 90. And then one person, two person, and three person ranged from 120, 100 to 170, and it went from 115 to 185.
What?
Senator, just for the record, was this the only qualifications that were received?
Yes.
When was the last time the fees were adjusted?
Several years ago.
So we wouldn't have an adjustment anyway?
Whenever Fodre took over. And we just approved that contract, what, in the last year? And Fodre's dissolving, Chip started his own company, and he submitted his RFQ, only one I received.
Thank you so much, Chip. We appreciate it.
Yeah, there's nothing much more.
All the surveyors, you know, nominated him. You know, we went from like nine surveyors to like five maybe now in Valley County.
Are you gonna dig on at this? Somebody gotta make you carry on.
I'll have some temporary help.
And I don't, I think that this is well within reason as far as the increase in fees. Really appreciate Chip stepping up and giving us work.
I sent it to Brian for review.
Okay, so then, any other data motion?
I approve the Valley County Surveyor contract.
I'll sign that one.
Bowers Land Surveys, do you need that though?
Yep. I'm moved and signed. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. You have the signature. Very good.
This is a 25-year contract? It's gonna be around a long time, right?
As long as I can.
If you ever wanna retire, you have to make sure there is a replacement. Is that in the contract?
Okay, while Dave's signing that, we'll move on down to our agenda. Our next item is ultimate action item. This is a special decision regarding the use of Smith Ferry Drive during highway construction. Mr. O'Laughlin.
In fact. Show us closed.
What's in there going? What did he say?
I was trying, Mr. Chip. I've been thinking about it for a while. Little mind fart there, but that's good. What's your recommendations?
Um, I think it just needs to be closed.
So give us background. What?
So, okay, so the last, so after that rock slide a couple of weeks ago, highway was closed. They were, I'm not gonna say trapped, but they could not get to services up here for nine days. The road over the hill was closed, still closed by snow. No complaints whatsoever from anybody. So why do we have to give anybody permission from 10 to 2 to use that road for, to get groceries, doctor's appointments? Because last summer, the sheriff's office could not keep up with everybody. The flaggers got so sick and tired of dealing with people complaining at them, throwing things at them, just flying by them without even stopping. Flaggers just gave up last year. Every time I'd go through there, they would just look at me and wave. They didn't know who I was.
That's it.
Well, after I went by and they seen the sticker on the side of the pickup maybe, but from what I seen last year, I kinda went up there and I sat up there for a while to see who was coming, and I seen a YMC heating and cooling truck go through. I seen a pickup full of insulation go through. Seen a pickup with a long, flat dump trailer thing that was full of lumber and two-by-fours, and they went through. Flaggers are just letting them through. The only time people will stop and maybe think twice is if one of their deputies is sitting there with the flagger. But can't really designate a deputy to sit there four hours a day. I mean, full closure, I mean, the mail, mail got up here for nine days. FedEx got here, UPS got here, with the highway being closed.
From what I was told.
So if they let them through, why can't they let them through during the 10 to 2 closures?
I think that we need to change our questions for ITD. That's what we need to do.
I mean, that, I know Elton knows that road. I don't know if you guys have ever been on it, but it's a, it's not a good road.
My concern, honestly, Jeff, is that we're gonna tear it up if it's too wet, and I wanna keep people on their toes, and we need it dry.
Well, that's why we're not, we're not even gonna open it. I don't open roads unless absolutely necessary because they get tore up. That north side, it's gonna be a muddy mess coming into Round Valley if we open that up. It's only, it's only until basically Memorial Day, and after Memorial Day, it's gonna be just one lane road all summer long. They're not running closures from 10 to 2 all summer.
When is Memorial Day? May?
Last week into May. Then they're gonna kinda, they're stretching something out two weeks to accommodate the cattle trucks.
So really, we won't be dealing with that.
Not a lot.
That road is not gonna be open anyway.
There's a good chance people will punch through there. They're already trying.
Eventually, they'll try.
They're already trying. We've got cars stuck. I had an employee down there, luckily he had tracks for his UTV, and he was running it back and forth. He was a very dedicated employee, that he took it upon himself to come to work every day, and he rode his ATV over the top and hooked a ride with one of my employees, and I think he only missed two days of work. So I don't know. Do we just put the barricades up and let the traffic have it if they wanna go that way? Or do we put gates up? But if we put gates up, I gotta have one of my people go down. I mean, do we close it 24 hours a day? Or do we just close it for four hours?
I think after it's dried out, let's just open it up, which would be around Memorial Day, probably. That north side of that road is gonna be snowed till way late. We know how that's gonna work.
Okay, so then we gotta think into the fall, 'cause Labor Day to middle of November, we're gonna be 10 to 2 closures again.
I think we need to talk to ITD before this decision is made.
I think it'd be good to get them here to, or do a Zoom or something with them, because this, that road, I mean, talking to the captain and Capery and the sheriff is, it was just a nightmare last summer. I mean, the residents down there on Round Valley Road, Gray Lane, 60, even people were going through Clerk Creek, skirt around everybody, and they were not going slow. I've got, I've got a top speed on 60 Lane last year of over 60 miles an hour on one of my traffic counters. And I'm sure Round Valley Road, just looking from my house down there, the clouded dust was, you could see right where the road went up and over the top.
So I understand what you're saying. On a regular summer, three years from now, would stop somebody from doing 60 miles an hour on that getting to?
Nobody, nothing. If deputies happens to be there, that's the only thing that's gonna stop them, or resident throwing rocks, or four-by-fours, or something at them.
Would that be you?
It wouldn't be me, no, no.
My whole conversation is, what changes from right now to three years from now? Because the road will be open back up three years from now, but people still take that Smith Ferry Drive.
Yeah, if they wanna go over the top, they still go over the top.
If they want to be crazy to get there.
Yeah. Right now, people are mad at the construction, so they're driving two, three, four times faster than they should be.
Maybe we need to be ticketing a few of those, but no. But, you know, I mean, that's, it's an enforcement policy, more so, I think, than just closing a road that is a current county road. That's the concern I have, I guess.
I don't know. I'm actually just, like I said, let's close it, gate it, whatever we gotta do to eat people off it until it's dried out, and then let it, open it up for the summer and let them out.
The thing is, I will not get a gate in this time of year.
Pretty soft right now, man.
Not on this side. Still got six foot, six foot snowbanks.
That's gonna be easy. Somebody's gonna get up there and try and punch through. They're gonna sit there for hours, wait for somebody to pull them up.
It's already happening.
Is it?
Been half dozen of them tried to get up from the Smith Ferry side and got quite a ways up in there in the morning and got stuck.
So what can we do right now to stop that?
We, we've had our barricades up for the last three weeks down there.
I gotta run around barricades?
Mm-hmm. Just like they did last year.
So what kind of a B is there going rescue to them?
Something like that. If, if the wrecker can't get, get to them, they gotta hire a loader or something to go plow the road up to them.
I mean, if you go around a barricade, there should be some kind of refund if somebody has to go on a road that's been closed.
Should be, if the sheriff's office is notified. Most of these people call their buddies and say, hey, come get me out of here before I get caught.
Sheriff, what do you wanna do?
I think it's a good idea what, what Jeff is saying. You're gonna get people that are gonna wanna be up there, the locals, or people that have come up and know that road, but it's just, you know, none of us have the staffing to be sitting there all the time and watching that road. I mean, we do respond to calls, but like I say, it's, it's just gonna be four hours, four days a week. And I know that you had residents down there in Smith Ferry, and the loggers wanted to go down empty, they couldn't make their second trip, and I don't know what the logging looks like this year. So, but once you start giving certain people the right to go through, then everybody else says, well, I'm going to.
That's, that's what the big fight was last fall.
So if they're going around barricades right now?
They should use to it.
What's that?
If they're going around barricades right now, how would you more effectively close it?
Gates. Putting concrete blocks up.
I was gonna say, it seems like to me, if we're talking about doing something, then we either put concrete blocks with a gate on it, but knowing that everybody has a tow chain in their vehicle, the gate's gonna get destroyed, so if we're gonna really close that road, then we need to do it with blocks.
But the problem is, there's other access points that come into that road from different areas, the state DF development. If, if, for some reason, an ambulance has to get up there to an ATV wreck, or an airplane wreck, or whatever, the concrete blocks.
I just don't understand that. I thought that road was just a straight shot through. I didn't know it connected to other roads.
There's, look on Google Earth, there's a lot of roads that come in off that Packer John site that will tie into that road if you find the right road. There's gates on them also, 'cause most of it's DF, but basically, that is a chunk of state ground, IDL ground, that we are locking up. There's gonna be consequences.
That's kinda why I keep, I have to, is, you know, honestly, any other scenario, why would we close a road?
It was, it's not safe, it's not a safe road.
Then we should close it permanently.
For highway traffic. Right, it's not a safe road for highway traffic.
For highway traffic. I mean, I can drive on it just fine, the sheriff can drive on it just fine, but you start slamming 50 cars an hour up there, going both directions, it, it's a, it's a 20 mile an hour road, 10 mile an hour in places, and...
How many roads are like that in the county?
That's about the only one. And part of the, Larry Laxson, I think he emailed you guys a note, if we do close it, 'cause that's a main route from the Emmett side to the Middle Fork side for an ATV trail. They'll come up out of High Valley, cross the highway, which they're legal to do, go across, go up Smith Ferry Drive, drop into Round Valley, drop up over into the Middle Fork. He says if we do block it, leave it open for 60-inch vehicles. Once again, are we gonna close it, or are we gonna leave it open? I stewed about this way too much when I was on vacation, all morning driving around, looking at roads, I'm thinking, how, how can we make this work to where it's not gonna be worse than it was last summer?
If we use the cement barriers and left a 60-inch gap, that would stop all the cars and trucks.
That would stop Jeeps, that would stop everything, except for 60-inch minus, ATVs, motorcycles.
And they're not gonna be tearing the road up too bad.
They'd tear them up doing five miles an hour.
I was gonna say, I would say a Jeep is gonna tear the road up just as much as a car.
I own one. The way the rear end works, it's...
It's a dump ass.
Yeah.
'Cause we've already had some people emailing, we wanna get on the list so we can use that though, just to...
I know, and it's, it's not gonna stop, I can guarantee it.
The only way to stop them is to physically stop them.
Stop them.
Can't do it with a gate, 'cause they're gonna pull those off.
It's four hours a day. I mean, that they are inconvenience for any amount of time. Otherwise, it's 15 minutes.
And they're taxpayers, and you don't...
I mean, that nine, that nine-day closure, that should've proved the point right there that it can happen.
Well, if it had been nine days in the middle of the summer, I think we'd have been in a different situation, because there wasn't snow and ice on back there as then.
But if we close it, they'd be in the same situation. For nine days, they'd have to go to Boise to get their groceries, or readjust their doctor's appointments, or ambulance is the main thing, but, you know, you were just saying they were letting the mail through on that nine-day closure. Road was open, it was just a safety factor of that rock spire siding to do something.
They let mail, UPS, FedEx.
School kids.
Massasoine, whatever it is.
Let's get ITD in here before we make a decision on this.
Okay.
Let's find out what else they can do besides blow that road for four hours.
Give that contact for ITD.
I do.
The boss, they gotta run the job.
Alex D. Duck.
I don't have multiple contacts down there, I'll figure out.
I think it'd be a good idea, 'cause we're just, we're trying to get this before the ball starts rolling this year. That's why, I mean, we had a bunch of people joking about our road close signs up with, and we actually had Sam stencil up some plywood that says, "Your GPS is wrong, this is not a detour," and put with the road closed, and people were taking pictures of that with the eight-foot snowbank behind it going, "Really? It's like they're really gonna use it?" Well, I don't know.
They're trying.
The only thing I would like to say, that if you were to completely close it, that was gonna be a route for emergency services to get through if they could, you know, we usually have to call down and let them know ahead of time, hey, we're coming through for a specific reason, whether it's a transporter, or an accent, or something that we need to get to, and they couldn't get the road cleared off for us to go on that one lane, then we would use that other access road. We never had to do that, but that was going to be our ability to get through. But they're saying that they should be able to, you know, if we call ahead of time, they can stop traffic on both ends and let us through, the ambulance, and that's what they've done before. So unless there's some major event, like they can't get it open slides, they need to have another access point for emergency services.
Something about the concrete barriers up there, if they have a wildfire, they're not gonna get to it, because they can't move a 5,000-pound concrete block.
But that we're just talking about, though, if you were, we're only concerned about when the roads close down during the four-hour walk.
10 to 2, yep.
Monday through, Monday through Thursday. And then, and then in the summer, it's just gonna, I mean, there'll still be people going, I'm sure. But I think because they, the traffic is moving and people getting used to that, I'm hoping that that will keep them on 55.
You got it.
So what I just heard, though, from this whole conversation is, people are going around a barrier, so you can't just use a barrier. If you put concrete block and close the thing, now we have fire issues and emergency vehicle issues, so you can't really do that either. So, so far, I haven't heard a really good solution to the problem.
Other than, I guess we'd have to, if we really put a couple people out there, we'd get lots of complaints, and then just get ticketed. We'll just have to enforce that so that, you know, they're causing the dust issue too around the residents that live in Round Valley. You can, like Jeff said, you can see.
Oh, it's horrible.
You can, you can see, they're just, every access point, you can see that dust rolling, so we'll try it.
So that's what I wanna talk to ITD about, you know?
If we could get ITD to go from 4 to 8 instead of 10 to 2, maybe they...
They, they won't last in the dark.
They have to clean that up.
Oh, you're talking 4:00 in the afternoon. That's all still daylight time.
I mean, maybe they can adjust their hours something different. Days are pretty long in the summer where they can pick, I don't know, 6 to 10 in the evening to do that.
Or pay the flaggers instead of us putting our sheriff's truck down there.
But they don't have any enforcement pop, you know?
No, they, they were so mad last year, the ones I talked to, they're like, oh, we've had stuff thrown at us, we've had tomatoes thrown at us, we've had beer bottles thrown at us, we've been cussed up and down one side and the other. They shouldn't be getting that kind of treatment.
No. I think if people are gonna do that, my, my vote is to put the concrete barriers up and lock it up to everybody.
Except for you got emergency vehicles.
You got emergency vehicles.
To figure out whether to enter the road construction.
I mean, you, you were on the, well, they can't get through from either side. You, you work for SIPPA, or we're on their board. What if SIPPA gets a call up there and they can't get through from either side?
They'll have to go in snowbank, go out that road, get out to High Valley, and come back down.
Come back down where? You're, you're on the wrong side of the highway.
Get back down.
I'm talking this ridge, this ridge between Smith Ferry and Round Valley.
My work is heard about the up in the states, and hey, we wanna log this, and we put logging trucks on, and we've lost it again.
And I don't know, I haven't heard what's, if anything's happened. I mean, that goes for the empty logging trucks, too. We're gonna close it, it needs to be just flat closed.
We're gonna get somebody killed on that road.
And gates, gates'll work, but I'm thinking powder river gates are 400 bucks a piece. Have to take two of them, so four, two on each side. I guarantee after the first time somebody in a big pickup gets mad and hooks a chain to it, who's gonna pay for the next gates, and the next gates, and the next gates?
They're not giving us any solution.
I, I know, I know. That's, that's why I...
Just because you put a close sign doesn't mean anybody's gonna...
It doesn't, it doesn't. Unless there's enforcement, which the sheriff's office is already...
We can do that, but what we can do?
Yeah. I mean, do we just operate the same way we did with the barricades up and just leave them there so people can drive around them if they want? Or do we put them more out in the middle of the road so people can't get around them and they have to physically, but I found out you do that, people will run over them and they're $600 signs. So it's better to just put it in the middle of the road, if they wanna go around it, while they're breaking the law.
Yeah, and I hate to say it, but it's either the cement barriers or a dip, so we're gonna fix this.
We got lots of spares, maybe we can put a couple of stuffed dummy scarecrows in them and park them out there.
Yeah, as I say, let's just park an old sheriff's truck.
Should make them bad.
I've seen them in Lake York, and it seems to slow people down.
Patty was around when they did that in Dawn, like way, way back when. Took an old cruiser and put a mannequin in it. Man, you'd see that, and it's like, ooh! I, I don't know, that, that's why I wanted to bring it up, maybe, and get everybody's heads together and maybe try to figure something out.
I think we need to talk to ITD, too, but, you know, to me, it just seems like there's a no-win situation on closing that road.
There's not.
People are gonna be making bad decisions if somebody rolls a car off of that road because they made a bad decision and went through a close sign.
Those barricades and signs cover our, cover us. If something happens up behind that, just like Dave said, we're off the hook, because, and I have people checking those signs every morning and every evening, or at least once a day, to make sure they're still there, still up.
Obviously, we don't have to worry about wildfires anytime in the near future.
Right.
Come fall.
Yeah, in summer, it's just, yeah, summer highways open and that, I, I don't know. I thought I had it all figured out till about two weeks ago, and then I, well...
Yeah, we don't figure it out till about 10.
Thanks, Dave.
I'll get ahold of them, get on schedule.
Okay.
Table this till then.
And I think that's the plan, maybe they can change their hour somehow.
Or give us some other direction. I mean, they're, they're impacting us without...
Yeah. I mean, they're, that's a, that's a Davis bacon job, so those flaggers are making $35, $38 an hour to sit in those vehicles on each side and not really do anything unless somebody stops them and actually initiates a conversation with them.
They just parked their vehicle across the road instead of on the side?
No, they were usually parked right behind the barricades. It'll work for now. Hopefully, we'll get it figured out before the road melts out.
Did you get out to Old State Highway today?
Yeah, guys are out there patching on it. It looked like a bomb went off.
That time of year.
Would you, just real quick before you leave, would you say that you think there's been more winter damage this year than in 10 years?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the freeze thaw was a lot more significant.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, luckily, we only had one covert so far froze up, and it only had one person behind it, and I worked on it Friday, and it thawed out over the weekend, so the water started running through the covert again. So far, so good. Lot better than I thought it was gonna be, but yeah, we got a lot of, our roads are just now starting to thaw out, and so you start to get weird little soft spots, and the pavement's just, pavement's not good.
What are you gonna put mold lemons on, or have you already?
They're already on it. We put them up two weeks ago. They'll stay on for about another, you know, kinda go by how fast the things dry up, couple weeks minimum.
Yeah, the worst thing you have now is a bunch of rain that will bring the road down and all that stuff, plus it'll soften up our roads.
Yep.
60 degrees is pretty good temperature to dry out roads.
Yeah. That wind really dried the road? I mean, we had dust last week on our roads. Okay, so I'll, I'll wait and see what comes up on the agenda with the ITD, and maybe even bring one of their engineers in with them or something. Maybe they've got an idea of some kind of a traffic control thing. I don't know.
Well, that was my, gonna be my question then, if they would close it, can they do that?
With your permission.
With our permission? And they could put the cement barriers up, and they could...
Well, they'd be better off just to put flaggers there that actually stopped traffic. Gates, there's where the gates would work, but you gotta have somebody right there with it for those four hours that will actually turn people around. Last year, they were just fed up. They were, they were just done. End of the summer, I, I don't even know if they were even stopping people. They were just sitting in their car every time I drove by them.
Well, they'll have to encourage you to do a little better job.
That, that's probably the, probably be the best thing to do. If you're gonna put flaggers there, they need to physically move those barricades out into the roads and nobody can get by, and if somebody wants through, it's, then again, we're back to the list of residents.
Do you have any of those movable, like, concrete block gates?
The big Jersey, or the...
Yeah, like a Jersey barrier with a post tenon on one side and the gates on the other side, or actually, most of our doubles. Yeah, like a Jersey barrier with a post tenon on one side and the gates on the other side, or actually most of them are doubles.
Oh, no, like the ones up Brundage?
Yeah.
No, we made all those when I was working up there. That's what.
Maybe that would be an option is if we're gonna have flaggers there, you have that thing there closing the road during the time that they're sitting there and they're just like, hey.
But the barricades are there and they're, they only weigh thirty pounds. You just grab onto them and slide them. I don't know. Sounds like a, we need to have another discussion with I T D. See if that's an option.
I'm trying to see if they can mobilize anything, but.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. We can do our last in session. You can't if that individual.
It was Pat, I think, from Smiths Ferry or something. Before you go into that, can I send someone to her and bring by? Valley's flooded with water and unfortunately.
Can I email it?
Sure. I think there's so many blocking roads that you can get around closures that it's just that. They were going around the old Pollock Road. Nothing was fairly wide enough to get a.
I don't know. I mean, scratch the paint on that one.
Well, as I said, there's that whole big section where the road is slumped off.
Really, it's kind of arrogant to me to have I T D close the road right in the middle of the day.
I know.
Why didn't they do it, you know, in the middle of the night?
It's their convenience. That's the whole thing.
Get over that. You come in and they all left.
Say we gotta use the restroom.
I don't blame you one good.
I do too.
Well, you haven't gotten to executive session yet, so.
Are you still recording?
How long have that challenge been since they've called season last?
I think it's three, like the second week of May. So yeah, unfortunately, I don't really, uh, home games will have.
I know.
Cause there's still a couple of feet of snow on the new water field.
Makes it hard to practice.
Yeah, it's hard for call. Call don't begin to practice. And we have, we have one player from Cascade that comes down and plays with us because Cascade doesn't have a team. We're at a disadvantage for sure.
Yeah.
What the kids love is sport. It's nice.
Yeah, it is. And it's gonna have a program.
Yep.
We petitioned to get the grandkids back to school full time. Let's turn them back to full time today.
Nice.
After they made the decision not to go full time, they had over fifty families reach out and say, come back full time. Or how do we come back full time?
Yeah, not someone like that full time at, uh, Mark Eight.
We only, McCall Donley is the only school district in the state I don't know not get personal time.
Really?
Yes. I don't think, uh, Boise. They did after spring break. Somebody, I can't remember whether it was West Eight or Boise, went back full time and then had to back up to Hyatt because they had problems with.
I sort of, I thought I heard something like that.
Yeah, I can't remember which one it was.
Are you, are you?
Okay, we're gonna go into our last hour, hour of agenda, which is the next item. It's an executive session for under code seventy-four, two oh six, number B.
Are you print forms?
That's what I was gonna do.
Do you have a motion?
We're gonna be going to executive session for under code seventy-four, two oh six, one D.
I'll second that.
We've been seconded by roll call. Chief Ruckai, Doug Rind, and, uh, two forty-five.
How many forms do you have, Pat?